Christmas time, let's go.
Okay. I would like to call to order our Finance Committee Workshop meeting for December 20th of 2023. And to start with, I just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and all that good stuff. We don't do a roll call, or do we?
No.
No, okay, no roll call. So we'll start with public comment. Do we have any? All right, I have two for Mr. Holt and Audrey Coppersmith. They're friends of the council.
Exactly.
Ladies first.
Merry Christmas.
Audrey?
Good evening, Audrey Coppersmith, 412 OCH Drive, Hanover, PA. Anyhow, I guess my public comment prior to the holidays has to do with the upcoming, I guess, fast track of Cherry Tree Five now that's coming to fruition now that we've been through, what, 11 months of postponements and various other things. And now it looks like it's on fast track central because planning is going to meet again in January. And it looks like some of the things that are coming up are they don't want to lose out on their special exemption that would expire according to their zoning application within one year. And the one year would be from last January when it was originally filed. So anyhow, that's just one piece of it. So this says if construction and so forth doesn't move forward. Also, some interesting information came across with reading the 2022 Annual Report.
Is there a?
I'm sorry, of the annual borough. And finding out the different aspects of things that are going on within the borough and what information is available to the public. And it might be good to actually advertise some of that so that more of the community is aware of what the borough is responsible for doing because a lot of you all do a lot of volunteer work, a lot of reading and so forth. And most people don't really know what's involved with the borough. And it might be very helpful for more of the public to know what goes on behind the scenes and so forth. Because maybe there would be even some more interest of more people showing up to meetings as well as more people getting involved to help make Hanover a better community. We still have issues in CT4, and we're hoping that once the weather breaks down the road, that maybe some things will be finalized. They just finished putting, I guess, plywood on the last of the triplex today. So they're moving ahead full speed to get those buildings done and obviously move out eventually and move into CT5. So we're just asking that you think very carefully when it comes before you and think long and hard and not be bamboozled by the promises that are made. Because promises made are not always promises kept. We've seen that in CT4, and we don't want to have a repeat in CT5. So thank you for your time. Have a wonderful holiday, get a restful break, and pray for warm weather that we don't have a lot of snow. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next with Mr. Holt.
Thank you.
You wish to address governance.
Sorry.
Who? Governance and microphones.
Robert Holt, PO Box 1131, Hanover, I'm in the Third Board. Again, I want to emphasize governance and transparency. I feel there can be a greater level of some transparency in the information that's given to the public during consideration of the budget each year. More detail, maybe more specifics, not ad infinitum. And I also think that when you come to voting on certain sections of the budget, such as the miscellaneous fees, schedule, and things like that, it shouldn't be done in a package. The council members should be able to vote at their discretion based on their judgment and use, exercise their values and experience and so that they can maybe make decisions that they feel more comfortable with. And I, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for speaking. Do we have any digital participants this evening? We do not. Okay, well, then I'll call the public comment closed. We didn't have any executive session. So then we'll go next to Silas here. There we go. York County Wi-Fi update. Yoko, there we go.
Good evening. Thank you for an opportunity to speak this evening. I was looking back in my old notes, and I was before council in July of 2021, first talking about our urban wireless project at the county. And so that was at the very front end of it when it was very conceptual. And the presentation I'll give this evening is an update of where things stand. And as you'll see, we've gotten to the implementation phase of this work. So I'm with the York County Economic Alliance, but I also serve as Chair of the Yoko Fiber Broadband Task Force, which is a group that the York County Commissioners created to help advance a broadband strategy for York County and help close the digital divide. So just a few slides to show where things stand and also give a little background. This, even though it might be a little tough to see, shows a lack of broadband access across York County. Just to summarize, the darker the shade of color, the less access there is. And as you can see from some of the statistics there on this eastern part of our county, think Airville and the Broke and that area, around 75% of households have no high-speed internet access because there's no fiber infrastructure. But even areas approaching Cudores there, you can see a large census tract that's 40% of households that don't have access to high-speed internet. And even the light shades of purple are 30% of households. So across York County, which is generally considered well-served by fiber internet, there's large swaths of the county where households don't have access. And so they're doing workarounds like-
Where would I see Hanover Borough?
So Hanover is, well, I'll show this map here. So on the left is Hanover Borough. And it's a little different situation in Hanover and in the city of York where there is fiber internet present. But when you take a poll of actual residents, you find that a large number still don't have access to reliable internet because in the urban parts of our county, it's not about the access to fiber. The fiber is there. And you know, you have Chantel, you have Comcast, you have other incumbents. It's the affordability of the programs. And it's also other issues like mobility between households, maybe not having a permanent address for more than a few months, sharing a household with another primary owner, poor credit, issues where you might have rented or leased equipment in the past and defaulted on those leases. So the end result is there's a high number of households, you can see 36% in Hanover, 44% in the city of York, that don't have high-speed internet. And the implications of that are not just the recreational stuff. It's also the ability to search for a job, the ability to do telehealth appointments if you're a senior, students to be able to access the internet. And obviously, during the pandemic, this really rose to the forefront, but it's been an ongoing issue even since then. And if you zoom in on Hanover Borough just a little bit more, you can see that there's actually even higher rates depending on what part of the community you're looking at. These are broken down by block group. You can see this block group has 57% of households reporting in the census that they don't have a high-speed internet connection. So our approach-
That may be their own choice.
Yeah, some of this is your, is the own choice for sure. And that's true of rural and urban areas. So just to try to quantify those unserved residents across municipalities. And these are, you know, our most urbanized boroughs within the county of York. You're looking at about 26,000, 27,000 unserved residents across the 11,000 households. And just trying to focus in on Hanover Borough, around 5,600 residents across 2,400 households. And all these are estimates, obviously. The census itself is-
Hanover Borough has 2,400 households?
It's more than, it has, it has 7,000 households in Hanover Borough.
24 is the unserved population.
Okay, thank you.
Margie, 24 was what, again?
Unserved population. Okay, thank you.
And these are-
That's what I thought.
2,500.
Yeah.
And these are all estimates, of course. It could be hundreds more, hundreds less.
So it's a third of the households, roughly, you're saying?
Yep. And that goes back to that census data that showed, you know, somewhere between 30 and 40%. So the only reason to show this is just to show there's, there's an issue. There's a digital divide. There are people in our community that don't have access. And that's really what the broadband task force was formed to help address, not solve, because to solve it, it would be a huge undertaking. So we've been working with this group that I help lead that includes representatives of our, superintendents of our school districts, UPMC, Wellspan, Higher Ed, Gary Laird from the Hanover Chamber is a member, and also, you know, other, other folks across the county. And the whole idea was to bring people together that bring a variety of perspectives to issues around the digital divide. When, in 2020, when the county received CARES Act funding, that was sort of that first installment of COVID recovery funds. One and a half million dollars of the county's funds were invested in building a small section of a fiber network underneath the York Heritage Rail Trail. And that was about 16 miles from the city of York to the Maryland Line. The reason that was chosen is because it was a county-owned park. There was conduit buried under the trail already, and so we can move very quickly with funds. And those funds expired very quickly. So it was sort of a proof of concept. And then we installed some wireless Wi-Fi antennas at the popular trailheads there almost as a proof of concept. We also spent some of that CARES funding trying to drill down on the census data and learn, you know, a little bit more about who has access and who doesn't. So we did a statistically significant survey, which was 1,300 participants across York County, including Hanover, but including rural parts of the county as well. And we found that 31% do not have high-speed internet access, consistent with the census data. And then a number of things that sort of reaffirm what you would already guess. 46% are not satisfied with their current internet. And you could have the highest internet available and probably still not be 100% satisfied because who loves their internet provider. But we also included speed tests within this so that people could, you know, do a basic speed test, and we could determine, you know, what kind of speeds are people really getting. And the troubling thing is, you know, the number of people that are paying for a very high-speed package but getting less than high-speed internet. And that's imperfect as well. It could be that somebody's on a slow device. Could be that they're connecting a bunch of devices in one household, so it's bringing down their speed. But the trend is just showing that even in the areas in the mapping that are showing it being well-served by high-speed internet, there's still a lack of, you know, true high-speed access. And then finally, that 87% would sign up for broadband or enhanced services if they were available in their area. And then, of course, a lot of anecdotal data, which you're probably all familiar with, the stories that we all hear of, of, you know, families that have to have their kids sit in the parking lot of a convenience store to get a Wi-Fi signal so that they can do their homework. People that are in, you know, less connected parts of the county not having access to even a cell signal that where they can connect to public or public safety services. And then businesses that would want to have higher speed capacity but just can't have it available. There are some workarounds that were documented, like Starlink, you know, satellite internet. But there's very high waiting lists. It's very expensive. And so even some of those solutions that you might see out in some of the really rural parts of the county would not really work to close the divide. So as a result, still under that CARES Act funding, we did a countywide broadband study with the county commissioners and that task force to plot out what it would look like to expand high-speed internet across all of York County. As you can imagine, there's a lot of different scenarios in there. If it's all fiber internet, if it's wireless internet, if it's buried conduit, if it's going along poles arially, there's a lot of scenarios. But at least it gave us a basic blueprint for how we could deliver internet across York County if we had the opportunity. And fortunately, in 2021, the Rescue Plan Act was then passed. And as you know, every municipality in the country received funding through ARPA, the Rescue Plan, but so did counties. And under ARPA, the county commissioners allocated $25 million to implementing the strategy that was designed through our countywide plan. And there were two major pieces of that. One was the rural solution, which is expanding actual fiber infrastructure out into these underserved areas and then providing the opportunity for private providers to connect to that. So sort of like creating the highway system and then having the private sector build the local roads, except in terms of internet. And then the other piece was trying to solve the urban digital divide where there's already fiber, and that's the urban wireless. So I'll just quickly show you the plan for the countywide fiber in the rural areas. And that's what you're seeing on the screen, was this design of roughly seven rings of fiber that would connect into underserved parts of the county and sort of bridge that divide between served and unserved. We, you know, those seven rings are 333 miles in total. That's a lot to bite off. So under that 20, $25 million, we pulled out 20 million and said we could do 144 miles of that network with that ARPA funding. And that's what you see circled in red. It's three rings. It's not by chance that Southern York County is the focus because when you go back to that census data slide, those are the parts of the county most underserved. And so that's where we decided to start. And then the line that you might not be able to see between Ring Five and Ring Six, sort of paralleling 83, is that 16 miles of fiber that the county already built. So it's really just building off of what we already had in place. So right now, after some fits and starts, the county is in the process of design and engineering of those three rings and then would move forward with construction.
Whoops, am I?
Okay. The other piece of it, so that was the rural piece, getting fiber out across more of the county. The urban piece was the creation of free public Wi-Fi networks in the York and Hanover metros, not to replace those that could afford a fiber connection because if you want to stream HD video and play video games or, you know, download a bunch of content, you need a paid subscription and you need a lot of data. But if you're just trying to meet your basic services and you're using the essentials of the internet, these public Wi-Fi networks can help do that. So back in 2020, 20, or 2021, I sort of introduced the idea that we wanted to move towards this. And now we've spent the last couple of years designing it, raising the funding for it, and now we're ready to start building it. So the buildout across the York and Hanover metros is about $4.5 million. The county's already committed that as part of that 25 million. We already paid half a million dollars to design the networks, which is identify all the feeder sites where antennas would be located and then the little pole attachments that will spread out across the community and provide the signal to homes and businesses. And so there's about 17 feeder sites, which are, you know, on prominent buildings and antennas attached. And then that feeds a signal to pole-level attachments that are just these little boxes that would go on a light pole, and that's what people actually connect to. So 17 feeder sites and about 1,100 pole attachments across the two networks. And I'll show you in a second.
This is for the entire county?
This is for just those urban metros because we're not going to cast a Wi-Fi signal out into the rural areas, just, just the urban areas. So the design was completed in summer 2022. We've actually begun the installation of a pilot project already, which includes one feeder site in Hanover of two total and one in the city of York of a number of, you know, more total because it's a larger community. We, the key to this that took us longer to get this all put together was really the operations and maintenance. Unlike out in the rural area where eventually a private provider connects and they're leasing from you or they're sharing revenue from you, and you use that to pay for the maintenance of the network, this is free and it's being provided as a public service. So, and the county had already put $5 million into it. So they tasked us with going out to the private community and getting donations to operate and maintain the network. And we've raised about $7 million so far. And the idea is if we can demonstrate through data in the first three to five years of the network that people are really using it and it's really helping to improve people's lives, then there's opportunities to, you know, keep that investment going through the private sector. That we're never going to charge money for it, but you can also do like sponsorships and landing pages in ways that you could bring in money to maintain it. And we'll explore all that. But you can see the city of York put some of their ARPA money in Powder Mill Foundation, and of course Wareheim that's based here in Hanover. And so Hanover's network looks like this. This is just showing the first feeder site, which we're proposing. And the reason I'm in front of you is the Terrace Avenue Water Tower was in the design process identified as a potential feeder site. Obviously, a large prominent structure. It already has telecommunications infrastructure on it. And so we approached the borough staff about installing a feeder site there. And then, and that's where the red is, and that's what's casting the signal out. And then each one of those little dots is a pole attachment. And so in this first phase, we would do that Terrace Avenue feeder site.
So it would broadcast from the Terrace Central thing to a repeater site at a local telephone hall by my house. Is that what you're?
Yep. It's casting a signal, and then each of those pole attachments is picking up that signal.
Got it.
And you can see that's about 155 pole attachments in this first phase. The idea of doing a Phase One and a Phase Two is we can do a Phase One and then go out in the field and test it and make sure it's doing what we hoped it would do because we're not going to know until, until it's actually up and operational, you know, what the strength of signal is. Is it really covering the area that we hoped it would? And we can tweak the design for Phase Two if it, if we do learn something. Phase Two in Hanover would be on the UPMC Hospital. We've already, you know, UPMC is open to that. We've already had our design team in there to look at it, to see where we would run conduit, and they would enter into an agreement with us to place it there. And with that second feeder site would be 166 pole attachments. So really, what we're seeking is not funding for installation or maintenance. You can already see we've raised those funds and we have those funds from the county. What we're really seeking is a partnership to install an antenna on the Terrace Avenue Water Tower. We did provide the borough staff with a proposed, let me get the term right, co-location lease agreement for the urban wireless program of the county of York, which pretty much says, will you allow us to put an antenna there at our cost to install it? And, you know, it's 16 pages of relieving the borough of most liability and, you know, everything like that. But we'd love your consideration of that agreement so that we can move forward with making the installation of that pilot feeder site and then move forward with those pole attachments, which, you know, we're doing through First Energy and MedEd and other partners. And the timeline to move forward on all this is really quarter one of 2024. We have the funding. We have, you know, the design, and we're pretty much ready to start installing. And the nice thing about the network is as soon as it's installed, you can turn on that feeder site, start running it, and then you install the next one, you turn that on. You don't have to wait a year until you've installed the whole thing. It can happen in stages.
Sounds good. Sounds great.
So how do we move, what, how do we move forward with this?
It'll be on the agenda. It'll be on the agenda for, we can put it on next week since you've heard it this week. We'll put it on for next week.
All right, sounds good. All right, Silas, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four, consent agenda. Items A through E. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second? Mr. Kress?
Barb did.
Barb, thank you, Barb. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Item five, expiring terms and recommendations to appoint.
This is an area we struggle with, and I think we all need to collectively work better on this to, you know, recruit people to be the organization, part of the solution, not part of the problem or part of the critics. Margie, you want to help me with how you want to go through this?
Well, essentially, we have incumbents that are interested in continuing to serve again, and we do not have any candidates outside of the incumbents. Dr. Rupp has asked that we put that on as one of our goals for governance, to work toward outreach and, you know, making sure that we get more of the community interested in serving and share the information so that they know what it's about. I mean, I think it's-
I think that's important.
It is. It's also important that we have good candidates that are interested in serving again. So that's a blessing. And I mean, you can handle it how you want to, Scott. You can do it as a slate, almost, of all of these folks.
Okay, so we would, we would like a motion then to have the, what would it be, the proposed, the incumbents and the, the single cross? Approve the pension, okay. All right, so we would like a motion then to approve the potential appointees that are listed here.
So motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that, please? No? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. So then for the Hanover Area Fire and Rescue Commission, we need an alternate council representative in addition to Mr. Kress, who, Tim, I thank you for your continued service there. I don't know that we're going to come up with that answer here this evening.
Someone from council volunteers.
Right.
So to speak to that issue, it's currently myself, Councilor Kress, and Councilor Gary Greenhold being the alternate with, with Councilor Greenhold leaving council. Tim will be the, the regular member, as I'm the regular member. We need someone else to start as a alternate. Job description is you attend a monthly meeting and serve as needed. It's a lot of fun.
I'll do it.
Okay, I sold it.
I'll do it.
You would do it?
With, with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like then to nominate Carol Greenhold.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carol, you win. Ding 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 ding. All right. So that carries us through item five. I guess that brings us to item six, Finance Personnel Administration. A, 2024 Compensation and Health Insurance for Non-Union Employees. We need a resolution to approve that. May I have a motion in favor?
Motion.
Second?
No.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
A motion, I'm sorry.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, the Asping White Side Letter Agreement. To approve, a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Barb?
Second.
Second. Mr. Kress, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 2024 Insurance, General Liability and Workman's Comp, approved. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, Hanover Public Safety and Administrative Complex, approve the resolution for reimbursement. Those in favor? Or can I have a motion, I should say, to approve?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Governance and Policy, Fire Escrow Ordinance. Approve the advertisement of the ordinance.
No motion.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Tim, we do have the timeframe in that when we-
Yeah, we, we put the 60-day requirement for the borough in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Funk. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item seven carries. Recreation, item eight, the DCNR Comprehensive Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan for '24 to 2033. It's a long time, Margie.
10-year plan.
10-year plan.
Okay. And I have a motion to approve that.
So motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Margie, was this approved by DCNR?
Yes, that's why we're here.
That's what I figured, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Yep.
That was quick. That was quick.
Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Department of Planning and Engineering, Mr. Storage on Juniper Lane, to approve the release of the performance bond.
I'm going to motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Item carries. And the last then, oh, we have Riley Welding, Two Thirty Chestnut. Approve resolution for the reverse subdivision plan.
I'm going to so motion on that.
Second.
Second, discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to item C, gets run, approve the release of the performance bond.
I'm going to so motion on that one also.
Thank you, Ms. Funk.
Second.
Second. Carol, any discussion? All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, that motion carries. That brings us to Public Safety Committee. The no parking restriction. We have approved the advertisement of the ordinance for no parking on First Alley North of and adjacent to Three Oh Nine West Hanover Street. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Second one here, Market House Mid Block Crosswalk. Improve installation of a mid-block crosswalk on East Chestnut in front of our Market House at a cost of nine thousand dollars for a meter heels. Those in favor? Or have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion?
Just clarity, clarification. AJ, in your presentation or the materials, the crosswalk, was that down near the ramp or is it at the double doors?
Correct. At this time, it will have to be down towards the ramp if, if you- Sort of by where the entrance is on the street. We're going to have to do this in phases, because there will have to be in the future, there will have to be some added engineering to eventually expand the sidewalk. The original goal was to have it lead directly to the double doors. There's not enough room there for a landing pad, for an ADA ramp.
Okay.
So to get this thing in and moving at this point, we move it down towards the existing ADA ramp, create that safe zone for pedestrians to cross with the proper signage then. And as we move forward with what- with what we've been talking about in public safety, to make the additional improvements to East Chestnut Street, that will be part of the bigger plan than as we continue the phases of this.
Okay.
Are you- are you planning flashing lights?
Not at this time. That is- that is one of the possible recommendations. So at this time, it will be just the signage and the pavement markings. It's like on the third pa- second page of your memo there, what we're going to install.
I saw the picture, and I thought we were talking at the double doors. I didn't realize it was temporary shift.
Yeah, yeah, there's just not enough room to do that now without creating a bigger sidewalk area, which is the future plan.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, second discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion carries, ten B. Brings us to eleven, reports that council members, committee chairs, and other public bodies. Do we have anything to report here? No? Chuck? No? Mr. Kress?
Nope.
You good? All right. Any management reports beside what we've already had? All right, any correspondence and information?
Just that was- that was included, and then a notation under item thirteen, correspondence information, that the meeting, mandatory biannual reorg meeting and election of officers will be held Tuesday, January second, twenty twenty-four, at seven.
Okay. I guess that brings us to any other additional public comment, either in the room or digitally.
Scott?
Ma'am?
Can I ask one question? I was speaking with Margie on this, and we're getting, Brian, are you getting a lot of comment from your ward on the railroad tracks there at East Middle? Because, no, I'm really getting besieged. I really am. It's not just my ward. It's the entire town. I'm-
It's regular.
AJ, can you talk?
Can- can you please address this? Yeah. I was assuming, AJ, that you have a-
Talking about the railroad crossing at East Middle Street.
Yes, that railroad. The ties have been taken up down- down from that area there, so it's not usable. But I'm getting comments from people contacting me, even from Penn Township. They're talking about getting, you know, together and signing, you know, a large- and I don't want to have to go through that.
Yeah, it's unfortunately, it's been a frustrating process for all of us. The railroad is only governed by the federal authorities. We can request, and we- our outlet is using the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. We have made that official request through them. We've had other elected officials involved in the process to try and speed things up as much as possible. Unfortunately, it is not a quick process. We had a verbal agreement that was then kind of backed out of by York Rail. At that point, we contacted the PUC again. The PUC has made another visit, and we are currently working through the formal process to make the repair in cooperation with York Rail. The borough has offered its services to repave the area if York Rail removes the timbers. We both agreed on that concept, so it's working its way through the PUC now, and it is slated to be done in twenty twenty-four. I cannot give you an official date at the moment, but this has been something we've been working for- for years on multiple rail crossings in the borough.
It's the York Rail Crossing, not the CSX Crossing.
Correct, but that is also on the list.
East Middle, neither are great, but the York Rail's terrible.
As far as the verbal agreement, why did they back out on that?
Because they can.
Just because they can?
Unfortunately-
These are questions, these are questions that people want to know.
Yeah, I absolutely get it. And, you know, money was involved, and they kept saying, we don't have the money yet. We don't have the money yet. Supposed to be budgeted, so that's why we had to take the next step and then go into- enter into a formal agreement. And the only reason they were willing to go that far is basically because the borough is willing to take on half the cost, so.
AJ, is there an email address that if we-
I can get that.
That we could bombard the person?
Sure, I can get that to you. It is through the Pennsylvania PUC.
Yeah.
Now, most likely what they would do is report back to you that they are already in the process with us. But I can certainly share that, and I have shared that with folks who have called in and asked about the- that crossing or others in the borough.
It can't hurt, right?
No, it can't. Public pressure, I think, is- is needed, and the public is not having a problem with this.
You can put that out to your constituents.
Yes, so can you get that over to me?
Thanks, AJ.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, AJ.
All right, thank you very much. Any other additional public comment? Okay, so may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We're adjourned at whatever time it is. I can't see the clock.
And there you have it.